To help us kind of decipher Kelvin values, what LEDs really are, which apparently like little small computers apparently. Let me turn it over to you.
Thank you very much for that kind introduction. A little brief explanation about myself. My name is Ryan Remza. I work for Vertex Solutions. We are a manufacturer's representative for LED lighting companies. We represent about 90 different manufacturers ranging from outdoor lighting to indoor lighting, decorative facade lighting, and everything in between. We help round out the packages, for example, when there is a larger bid, to help facilitate the sale between the contractor and the distributor in making sure that the end user is getting everything they want and require out of their lighting. So with that said, little history of me and my town improving LED lighting. I made a presentation at my local town board trying to convince them to buy the lights and install them instead of having NICEG upgrade ours. I live in a small community. It is a nice little neighborhood. It is well illuminated with streetlights. When I moved in, they were the old metal halide, yellow, and I couldn't stand them. They drove me nuts, especially as an LED salesperson. Unfortunately, we were unable to come up with the funds to upgrade our dime and own the fixtures, so we relied on our provider, NICEG, in the area to do that for us. They came in, they upgraded all the lights, and I immediately started losing sleep. I have a couple of light fixtures very near to my house, and my bedroom window is well illuminated now. I had to get new shades. So I do, I am a salesperson. I do sell LED lighting, but with that said, I'm really happy that you invited me here because going forward, I'm looking to help bring everyone forward and provide proper illumination without light pollution, okay? With light pollution, there are a couple of different kinds. The one kind that I think was mentioned to me that was a concern was what's called dark skylighting. Obviously, we look up at the stars. There's been more and more reports about less stars being visible to us because of the light pollution that we are putting back up into the sky. That's done a couple of different ways. One is reflectance, and the other is with certain light fixtures that shed light in all directions. The other type of light pollution is what I'm experiencing in my bedroom, and that's direct, right into my neighbor's house, my house, your neighbor's house. So all things that, you know, I want to make sure people are thinking about going forward. We do have a lot of fancy ways that we can help prevent that light pollution and produce, still produce the necessary light levels needed, but without causing issues for our neighbors. And being an outdoorsman myself, I love gazing at the stars. So I'm kind of, you know, working on that end to help bring my specifiers up to their current knowledge of what we can do and what we should be doing going forward illuminating our towns. So I mentioned the LED light immediately had issues with my house. LED light is very directional. If we look at what a fluorescent lamp is, it sheds the light 360 degrees around the lamp. So back then, we structured the housings to reflect that light as best we can. A lot of factors involved, a lot of light loss with reflection. With the LEDs, we get a much more directional light. As you can see here, an LED is essentially a chip on a board. We put a slight power current to it, it illuminates. It is not a lamp that sheds in all directions. It is very directional. Typically, with something like an LED Linear II, it sheds light in about 220 degrees. So the amount of light that we're capturing on our surfaces, our desktop level, our floor levels, are compensated, I should say, they are increased by changing from what would be called an equivalent LED from the fluorescent. We are typically illuminating this space much better, much more efficiently, obviously. As I'm sure you all know, there is great energy savings with these, okay? Typically, we're running right now about 65% energy savings from the high intensity discharge that Mr. Dupree mentioned earlier. So there is great energy savings, but with that being directional, a lot of people aren't thinking about that. The fact that we are putting more light on the surfaces that we need it at as opposed to shedding in all directions and losing a lot of light inside the housing. So I know that we wanted to touch on color temperature, and I've had this from a couple people already. Getting the right color temperature is very important, and a lot of it is depending on the task at hand, okay? I deal a lot with the universities such as Cornell University, Binghamton University. Their standard for interior classroom lighting and office space for both of those is a 3500 Kelvin. It's not going to mean much to anybody. What it comes down to is if anybody can picture an old incandescent light bulb, okay? Very comfortable, warm light. That color temperature is approximately 2700 Kelvin, okay? So that's that warm light that we can refer back to. Now, some of the pressure sodium lamps, they're actually warmer than that to the amber side. But again, it's dependent on your application. I'm finding that for exterior lighting, I'm much more comfortable with a 3000 Kelvin, something a little bit warmer. It's not quite as warm as those pressure sodiums, but warmer than what's typically being specified, which is a 5000 Kelvin or a 4000 Kelvin, which is on the whiter end, and 5000 is almost pushing a tint of blue to it. Most spec sheets, when you're looking at these things, it appears that you get more lumens out of the light fixture by selecting a higher Kelvin temperature. It's difficult to actually quantify that. A lot of it is perceived light, which can't be quantified, and lumens is actually not an exact measurement. It's not precise. It does vary from manufacturer to manufacturer depending on their testing of the fixture. So I did want to touch a little bit more on the dark skylighting. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to get this on the internet here. Up until now, dark skylighting meant that we only shed the light 180 degrees out of the light fixture. So nothing was allowed to go above the horizon level, okay? But that's probably wasting more light than we need to if we, I'm going to probably lose the mic here, but if we take a look at 180 degrees compared to a 90, compared to a 45, right? And by accurately engineering and laying out, we have computer systems that can accurately lay these out over top of even satellite imaging to show what the predicted light levels will be, okay? Did you? So back to me not wanting the light shining into my bedroom, really that's what it comes down to. Going forward, we need to be looking at these things. A lot of that, those lumens that that light is producing is not being accurately put where we need it. It's being shed, it's bouncing off the buildings and becoming part of that light pollution that we don't need and maybe not maximizing our efficiency out of the amount of wattage we're going to spend, right? So I do know that there are probably tons of questions. I'm kind of rambling, and I fully expected this to be a lot of question and answer. So what shall I touch on next?
That's what I was saying. We usually, so when we're in regular planning board mode, I call them the consultants first for comments and questions, et cetera. So, and Ms. Fransen already raised her hand, so Bonnie?
So I was just going to suggest you touch upon foot candles and as illumination levels, and we also talk about the average versus the maximum and the minimum we'll see on foot candle diagrams. And I think it's useful to go into, from your perspective, how that translates and maybe related to the use of LEDs.
So how it translates is kind of tough to explain because we didn't, we didn't really worry about these things with the old HID lighting, right? So, and if we could, go visit a site with a light meter and see what those old lights are producing. Foot candles are the amount of light that is produced on a surface for usable light, okay? So brief exploration, I guess, would be in an office space at desktop level. We typically, again, for the larger universities that are much smarter than I, they like it at about 30 foot candles. For corridors, 20 is more than sufficient, and most IES, so IES is the Illuminations Engineering Society, okay? And they help set a lot of the standards for this stuff. For corridors, actually, they say 10 foot candles, but I like it a little on the higher side for that. For outdoor lighting, completely different. Foot candles are a little less important in outdoor lighting. Even illumination, which you touched on, is more important. You touched on the min's and the max's. Now, all of us lighting reps can and will produce documents that actually show point by point calculations, okay? So we can actually zoom in on, I could overlay a map using Google Earth and predict accurately what the foot candles will be. According to the IES, a parking lot really only needs to be illuminated to one tenth of a foot candle. So a classroom, an office, 30 foot candles. A corridor, 15, 20. Outdoor, it's back to that even illumination. The biggest issue with outdoor lighting and safety is going from dark to light or vice versa. As our eyes try to adjust, that's where the issues come in. So with outdoor lighting, now, mind you, I have done hospitals where they insisted on having 10 foot candles in their entire parking lot. Oftentimes, we're trying to tell people that it's way more light than they need. Now, with that hospital, they had security issues and overall illumination was less expensive than possible lawsuits, so, you know, we accommodated there. And of course, as a salesperson, we do, and we accommodate.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So when you say, when you say, when you say 10, is that 10 average or, because you're going to have hot spots and...
So they actually asked us to have no less than 10 foot candles, so it was a minimum of 10, and it was, I, I'm there often.
That's a morgue.
It's like daylight.
That's a morgue.
It's in my hometown.
Dissect bodies.
You do not feel unsafe when you walk through that parking lot, but sometimes you might want sunglasses. It is a little bit glary, which is another thing we didn't touch on yet, perceived amount of glare that comes off. With LED lighting, there can be more glare if we are not properly specifying the correct light distribution. One of the issues at my house, referring back to that again, because I'm selfish...
Yeah, you're mad about that, aren't you?
I'm bitter.
Yeah, I could tell.
A couple of the light fixtures hanging off the arm, the arm has been there since 1970, and it was holding up an old HID fixture. The old HID fixture weighed about 35 pounds. The new LED fixture only weighs about 12. So the arm was actually bent, and because those lights are so directional, right, it's pushing the light back towards my bedroom. The one on the opposite corner actually was installed tilted at about 15 degrees. Luckily, I caught a guy on a bucket truck, and he fixed that one for me for a small tip. But again, very directional, and if I could paint a picture in your mind of what this did, it didn't help for the even illumination across the street surface, right? That tilted LED was pushing the light this way, but on this hand side of it was lacking the amount of light that this side had, right? And then as you're driving through, you're passing from higher illumination and glare because of that angle into a darker area, so.
Larry, did you have a question?
You said 10 foot candles, right?
10, 10? I mentioned that a couple of times.
Yeah, so in a bank, right, at the ATM, is that 10?
Right, that's different.
Well, let's, actually, so ATM lighting in New York State has a couple, they have a lot of requirements, and some of them are a little over the top. Anywhere within 50 feet, excuse me, anywhere within 30 feet of your ATM, outdoor, you must have 30 foot candles at the ground. When you go out to 50 feet, and don't quote me on all this, but I'm pretty close, we've done a lot of banks. When you go out to 50 feet, they require 15 foot candles, but you can hold your light meter angled at the light. So it's, it's very strange how these, New York, but it's, it's part of the ATM Safety Act in New York State. So to answer your question, no. Around the banks, there may be areas that are only 10 foot. But if it is within that area of any ATM within 50 foot, it would be more, it should be more than that. A couple of the banks I deal with have had the state testing come out, and we have had to help them come up with different ways to add light so they can hit those requirements for New York State. Good question, though, thank you.
I think there was some disagreement.
Oh, well, so I work for county planning. We review lighting plans, among other things. And my understanding is that the ATM safety law requires no more than five foot candles, and that they do it in, it's like an arc out from the ATM.
Yep.
It's like within five feet or something like that, it has to be five foot candles. But I think it's not actually measured at the ground. I think it's measured like three or four feet up.
Oh, there's no...
And then whatever the next circle out is, I think it's two, and the furthest one is one. I don't recall seeing...
Yeah.
I can't remember ever seeing somebody like that.
I actually brought it up. So it is five, one five feet away from the ATM. So this is for outdoor ATMs. Two foot candles, one 30 feet away, one foot candle, one 60 feet away.
Okay.
According to this source.
Yeah, and like I said, I wasn't...
Yeah, I understand.
I wasn't even close, okay. I looked back.
It had 30, but it was 30 feet distance.
30 feet distance, five foot candles at height, yeah. The more difficult one, believe it or not, is that 60 feet away, one foot candle, depending on where you can locate your poles.
And banks don't want to fail their required lighting, so they like it a little higher?
And that brings me to a point that I did want to bring up, and that's called lumen depreciation. When we do these calculations, we calculate basically for the future, okay? If you could picture the old HID lamps, the depreciation of them was very rapid. As soon as you illuminated that light fixture, it immediately started depreciating. So if you look up cut sheets for an old high-pressure sodium or metal halide, it's very difficult to actually discern the amount of lumens that we should be calculating on now compared to what we used back then. The lumen depreciation of those HID lamps was very rapid, and then it would level out. In our calculations for predicted foot candles and going forward, we're down in here. Whereas with LED, the lumen depreciation is very slow. Now, to your point, we do calculate these all for a little bit in the future. Typical life of LEDs for outdoor site lighting, we're looking at 100,000 hours for the life of the LED itself. There are components that typically fail before that, but the actual diodes themselves are rated for about 100,000 hours. The old HIDs, most of them were rated for 5000 hours or less. So we do get a lot, much longer lifespan, less maintenance costs, obviously, and we are able to calculate those predicted levels using the higher part of the bell curve for the lumen depreciation. Did I lose anybody yet?
So maybe we could talk about everybody's favorite gas station canopy light.
And by the way, because I was going to bring that up, the IES, whenever we're confronted with gas station canopies, it sounds like it's a shill for the organization, just so you know. Because they, they don't, I've never heard anybody say that we only need to be a tenth of a foot candle for an outdoor area. They keep telling us that they need to be higher, higher. I think they said 5000 for the last one we did for Quick Stop, do you recall?
I don't remember the, I just remember they had very high foot candles also.
And as part of this, so the board, when we were first confronted with LEDs inside gasoline filling station canopies, it produces really harsh hot spots, but then they seem to quickly go down. So when Bonnie was mentioning earlier the minimum, the maximum foot candles and what the average is across the site, we're part of the Greenway Compact, which is right here, and this is actually part of our code. This is the more dated section on lighting still, that noted, we're required under our code to have an average of no more than two foot candles around a site. That includes banks or anything else, so we know the complications on this. But do you think that the hot spots are actually okay? Because when I, I don't think I've gassed, pulled up my car underneath at night in a long, long time, I'll put it that way. So I'm not really aware of what the harshness of the factors, how it feels.
Well, so...
Lots of questions in there.
I have seen a lot of gas stations, not many of them are well illuminated. Most of them are poorly done. Most of the illumination is actually part of the canopy itself, so if we were building a new gas station, it's rare that I get a peep at that because the canopy companies actually include all that. Now, it's funny, I'm always looking at light stop at a gas station on the way here, and in the middle of the daytime, I could tell that they had just terrible canopy lighting. I could tell by the install. So I guess I am not going to be familiar with the amount of required foot candles at a gas pump, because like I said, that is mostly incorporated...
That's not required, please note. IES is not an organization that can require anything. They're all suggestions.
Right, sure, yep.
The bank, in other words, the ATM, that's an act by elected officials that we all have to follow. It would therefore basically supersede our own code. But the IES is like the ITE, the International Traffic Engineers that we deal with as well. Those are suggestions and standards, that's all.
Yep. You're absolutely correct. Now, with that said, I guess the question referring to what should be or what is the recommended amount for gas station canopies, I'm going to have to look that one up for you just because it's rarely a part of my business.
Because it's done by somebody else.
What's that?
It's done by somebody else, the canopy people.
Yes, and they're not lighting people. And maybe this is something that, you know, going forward, as, as gas stations are asking for a permit in your town, this is something that we require is a layout for your, under canopy, for your entire site, because we want to see, is it exceeding what we want as far as Greenway? Because to fake, foot candles should be ample to fill your gas.
So, so Quick Stop, the latest plan that they submitted, so we got them to go with 3000 Kelvin, so it'd be softer, but the max under the canopy is 21 foot candles, and the average is 14. On the paved surfaces, the max is about 3.9, and then the entire site, the max is 21 because of the canopy. But it does drop off at the property edges, which it's supposed to like .10, you know, to get to zero. But it's, it's very, very concentrated under the canopy. And I guess, I know in other communities, they've said, forget it, you're not getting 21, and not even 10, because they just don't think it's necessary because it's still this big white blob under the canopy. And, and there really is no guidance or requirement, so it always becomes sort of this back and forth, you know, argument about what it should be sometimes.
I believe in that instance that we had board members who are familiar with the location of Quick Check Is, which is out further north of here in a rural area with not a lot of lighting. There's also, if I recall correctly, there might even be a little bit of light spillage that goes onto Route 9. I think that there's a little bit there, but I think that we said that was okay because, again, this is in a dark area with just a few businesses around it. I could be wrong.
And it may have been also okay from the board's perspective, because once you got beyond the canopy, it dropped significantly. I mean, if you look at even the edges of the canopy, it was already getting down, already, getting down to 10. So 21 was just a peak somewhere in there. But we do do the recessed, you know, there were other requirements to at least reduce the color intensity. But, you know, again, I think it's just useful to see standards for gas stations that would be more, let's say, maybe a, a nice, you know, compromise between dark sky and safety.
Nice question. What would be, what was, when you did the Speedway at the other end of the town, what's the average?
I don't remember, and I...
It's not that high.
I don't remember.
I'm just curious, just to give you like a frame of reference.
So let me just, so let me add some to that. So when I was, when I was representing the Town of Wapinjar Planning Board, right towards the end before, you know, I got off, or got off, where I stopped like doing that and we introduced somebody else, they were having the same thing, you know, gas stations coming in, you know, I don't know, 22 varieties, 10 to bright, whatever. So the chairman was a local building inspector, knowledgeable. He had, he had a light meter from, you know, his regular job, and so they scheduled, they scheduled time to go to different gas stations around town and measured, you know, the light at each, at whatever ones that they chose. Now, I don't know what the outcome was because I left, but they wanted to see, okay, so what did, what is the, you know, everybody seemed to think that the light at the Valero on 9D was good, so they went there and they checked, you know, the light. They thought that the lights at so-and-so gas station was way too bright, so they went and they checked that, you know. So I think, I don't think there's any guidance out there as to like publications, so I don't know, maybe that's something that...
Call you next.
It actually did cross my mind, you bring up a great point, for us to do a little show and tell and take a light meter and go around and see what's actually out there, to actually be able to put your mind's eye on it, right?
Because I mean, you know...
Talk numbers all day.
Even, even like me, I mean, I, you know, I mean, Don, Don, you know, would know because he's in, you know, the business, but, I mean, to know, okay, is this too bright? Is this not enough, not enough light? I mean, you got to go like look at it and know, okay, this is 10, this is around 20, you know?
Right.
You got to see it.
Another question.
Or feel it, whatever.
And a lot of that, I'm sorry, real quick, a lot of that is perceived light. When you're in the darkness, looking at the bright spot, it's perceived as very bright if you're in the, yeah, understood.
By the way, before we leave that question, I'm the only person up here that was on that application. It wasn't a... that application. It wasn't a Speedway, it was a Hess originally.
That's right, yeah.
Hess changed name to Speedway, so they came back through for signage, but you were on, but back then.
I.
They didn't have LEDs at the.
We didn't have LEDs. I was going to say there were LEDs, and the average foot candles would have been two or less, because that's more, it's on the entrance to town, we didn't want to have a lot of bright lights. We wanted to have, like, the theory would be that you have lower lights on the edges of your town, and then brighter lights at the very center where there's more life and activity. So, I didn't mean to interrupt, I apologize.
Since we're just having an open discussion, the other part of that perspective, though, is, for me, I won't stop at a gas station at night.
It's too dark.
Unless it's bright, bright, because I don't feel comfortable, you know, I, I go all through the county and I.
Safety.
Yeah.
Well, that's a very good point. So when I, so when I used to do, or when my, my former company, we did a lot of, a lot of Hess's in the area. And that was one of the things that they said, that they wanted bright enough lights so that women felt comfortable, like at night, stopping to get like gas.
Yeah, if I'm alone, I'll drive past until I'm like, okay, that looks like a beacon of light.
Now, there's two different ways that we're perceiving that brightness, right? And she touched on it, by steering this gas station towards 3,000 Kelvin, which is a warmer, more comfortable light, although it can be perceived as less light if we were to do the same location in 5,000 Kelvin, even though it's really the same amount of foot candles delivered. So there's some of that perception as well. I do love the fact that you are steering them towards a 3,000 Kelvin. Per the dark sky, the only Kelvin temperature, or the maximum Kelvin temperature allowed by dark sky is 3,000 Kelvin. I, I helped, when I first got started, I helped my old boss at a restaurant I worked at, I helped him illuminate his parking lot. And I talked him out of 5,000 K, but I only talked him into 4,000 K. And he has a very nice warm facade, warm colors, warm accent light, and every time I drive by, and it's not far from my house, I regret the fact that I didn't talk him into a warmer color temperature.
The contrast.
Yes.
Do you have another question, John?
Well, the other thing was, what are the health effects? Like, I've read the LED lighting, it's not good for you. I mean, that's a general statement, but like, it's, I'm just saying from a layman's person, like, you know, we're talking foot candles, we're talking lumens, how's this going to translate to regular people?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I'm, you good? So, that's kind of multifaceted. So, we've touched on Kelvin temperature, so I think everybody understands at this point. Now, one of the main studies with the negative health effects of LED lighting is being exposed for longer periods of time to the higher Kelvin temperatures. A huge part of my job is me going into warehouses, factories, and even office spaces and telling them that they really don't want 5,000 Kelvin, because a, a large portion of their staff is going to have headaches. They're going to suffer from fatigue. So, that is one part of it. Now, we're not getting away from the movement to LEDs, so the blanket statement that LEDs in general are not good for us, I think that remains to be seen. But there have been studies done on the Kelvin temperatures. So that higher Kelvin temperature prolonged exposure bad. The other part of it is over illumination of the space. Too much light is going to cause, screening on our eyes is also going to cause headaches and fatigue. So proper illumination at the task level, using the proper color temperatures, we hope to at least minimize any negative health effects, sir.
So, one of the things that you talked about was the dark sky is 180 degree.
Dispersal.
Dispersal.
Right.
And then you said there was a 90 degree and a 45 degree?
Yeah, roughly. There, there's actually much tighter distributions as well. That, that brings us into the spacing of your poles. So if we're referring to outdoor site lighting, you know, we could put more poles in, closer together, use less light at a lower mounting height, as opposed to higher mounting heights with higher output light fixtures further spaced apart.
So, in the spec sheets for the light fixtures, does it describe the angle that you get from that particular fixture?
Not that I've seen.
So, what we would be getting into there is what's called IES files, and they are actually what we use to put into the program when we're doing these layouts. Most of which you're going to see for cut sheets for site lighting is the light distribution. So if we're all the way at one side of a parking lot, and we don't need light behind us, we're using a certain type of light distribution to push it out further. If we are illuminating along a roadway, we are keeping that more of a narrow throw, but making it longer alongside of that roadway. They are related, and that is what is typically shown on the cut sheets. But what you're referring to, and what I was referring to with that angle of the light, I think we would have to go into something a little deeper than just the spec sheet to actually see what the angle of the lights are.
I feel like the, the dark sky compliant fixtures, allowing the horizontal distribution, seem to have the ability to cause more glare.
Absolutely, yes.
Which is frustrating, because we think, I think, when we say dark sky compliant, we're not going to have all that. So.
Thank you for bringing that.
Is it possible to frame the type of fixture that you want? Because there's, there's the LED fixtures or the heads that are flat, and then I can't tell whether the bulbs are here, or they're underneath and they're reflecting out.
Hospice.
Yeah.
That's dark sky compliant, but it travels out horizontally, and is glare right into the neighbors.
You're absolutely right. And I'm glad you brought that up, because that was a major part of this article that I showed the, the picture of, and I didn't really touch on it. So thank you for bringing that all back around for me. And yes, that is another major concern, right? Not only are we wasting that light at, at a, an angle that we're never going to use it, but we're also perceiving that as we come up to that light fixture, that angle of glare is much longer and more pronounced, as opposed to what we would call a tighter distribution, right? In keeping that, yeah.
So, when we look at the design of the fixtures, oftentimes for the dark sky compliant fixtures, we talk about full cutoff. So, that I think is supposed to address the distribution. But I guess the question is, do all, you know, especially luminaires that are on light posts, depending on their design aesthetically, can they have full cutoffs?
Thank you, Bonnie.
Like, like a pendant light, right? We love pendant lights.
If, if anybody noticed the lights in your beautiful parking lot right over here, they are what we, an acorn or a post top light. They do not have anything on top of them. They are a complete glass bulb that does shed light in every which direction, including straight up at the sky. So, to your point, yes, we can do that. Full cutoff is very general, and again, a kind of a guideline. Manufacturers can use it somewhat to their discretion. But basically, if we can picture those old wall packs that are terrible glare bombs, they have a full glass face, okay, that's zero cutoff. Now, with LEDs, we can add a shield to that, and we can direct the light where we want it. Often, it's that full cutoff. Now, I can't tell you which angle that cutoff is, because again, it's kind of proprietary. So each manufacturer may have a slightly different cutoff. And then, you know, also that'll be related to the amount of height we're going to mount it at, too.
Thank you.
Questions in the audience? Heather, can I see, raise your hand way back.
Yes, I have a question, but also the, the gas canopy thing?
Mm-hmm.
I would just put this out there as something to think about. So New York State ATM safety law requires, for one would assume, safety purposes, five foot candles at the ATM. So I would think five foot candles would be the maximum you would need under a gas canopy.
Extrapolating for safety purposes.
Because pumping gas is probably a less risky activity than walking up to an ATM at night.
You're extracting gas and not money.
I wondered if you could touch on sort of the uniformity of distribution and how it relates. You kind of started to get it in there with, you know, if you have taller poles and fewer of them, you're going to, I would think, have a distribution that's kind of like this, versus if you, if you have more and they're lower, you can even it out. And that sometimes, my understanding is that more, a more even distribution is, is the goal.
So, we can actually create the even distribution with, with both 30 foot poles as, as much as we can with 16 foot poles. The factors that we would be getting into are the glare factor, okay? So when we mount those at 30 foot high, we're pushing that light out further than we would be at 16 foot spaced at 25 foot. Whereas at 30 foot mounting height, those poles are probably going to be spaced close to 50 foot apart, right? So that angle of the glare with the higher mounting point, also more reflection. So, to answer your question, we can accomplish even illumination at the ground surface with either option. Now, for most end users, it's, it's more cost effective upfront, and really in the long run, too, typically, to go with a taller pole, less of them, more spaced out, with a light fixture that produces a whole lot more light.
But if you're talking about applications in downtown or parking lots, you would probably want lower poles, so then you would have more of them in order to distribute it.
Yes, and then, you know, depending on if we're discussing decorative lighting for our, our walkways, like you have right around here in town, or if we're talking about general roadway lighting, right? So, for roadway lighting, it would be great to be able to mount a pole every 20 feet, lower that glare. But at no point are our facilities going to, or our utility companies going to pony up that amount of money to make that happen, right? That the cost would just be too high.
Yeah, I know, because parking lots and sidewalks and sidewalk areas not long.
Yeah. A, a nice middle ground is usually somewhere around 20 foot, whereas most of the decorative stuff, when we're going to a more decorative post top, that mounting height is typically right around that 16 foot-ish mark.
What did we do for the Azarian Plaza? Didn't we?
Stop and stop, did you say, I'm, sorry?
Don't get mad at me.
I'm not mad at you, I'm mad what we were told at the time. They lied to us, just flat out lied. But then again, we all know my, my saying about applicants, sorry, that they're not always truthful with everything.
No reflection, no reflection of you guys.
Anyway, what does he say about salespeople?
I used to be in sales, don't worry. We were told that they would, we would have to have so many more lights if they were lower at what our code says, that it would look, that you wouldn't be able to find, you'd lose parking. That's obviously a lie. You can accomplish it with either one. So we allowed, we allowed them to have the taller poles at the time. There's also discussion as to whether poles needed a variance, and Herman, help me, Victoria, the attorney, Herman, man.
Monster?
No.
Started with an H. Hockerman.
Good job.
Hockerman, right?
Hockerman.
Mr. Hockerman.
Henry Hockerman.
Henry Hockerman. My neighbor in the city, no, not Irish, sorry. At any rate, he persuaded effectively the board, including Victoria and Mr. Rodenhause at the time, that these were standards that the planning board could relax, because they were not listed as heights in the back in the regulations, of bulk regulations, so they didn't require a variance. So that's when we started trying to work with applicants. Also, it is true, everyone says straight up, we can't afford all those light poles, all that light. So, and our job is rather often up here to keep pushing for things that are in our code that cost money, like sidewalks, benches, et cetera. So, there's a balance of factors always that happens up here, vis a vis the applications, so.
Azarian, I think we, I think we let them go to 25 from our.
24.
24 from our 20?
That's why I'm still like.
Twitchy.
Because that was, well, that was an early success for us. Remember, they only wanted to do one half of the mall.
Yeah.
Their side, nothing else, so it was.
Compromised.
Ryan, did you do the hospice in Hyde Park with Roundout?
Uh, maybe.
The lighting?
You don't want to say, you don't want to say, no, I did not do that.
Um, I believe we did provide that, yes, sir. Not with that said.
Did you?
Not, not with that said, before anybody starts showing anything, I mean, we, we provided what was specified.
Yeah.
Right, which I think brings me back to why, why I'm here, right? Is going forward, specifying the right stuff. Now, I'd have to go back and review. If you did have concerns about that, I'd love to hear them, just from my knowledge going forward.
So what happened at hospice is, is that it's in, surrounded by two neighborhoods, not sparsely populated, not sparsely populated, actually. But when we look at foot candles, we're not seeing light distribution. So we're seeing that the foot candles went to zero at the property's edge, well before the property's edge. We required screening, fence and some evergreens. But the houses on one, that are on the south side sit higher. So, as they're going by, and I went inside their, I went inside one of the residence and homes, you see the light is going right in your face, just like you're describing in your bedroom. And by the way, my house was built in the 1860s, 1011, old, just on the hill, the old section of town. The light shines right in my second floor window, right in me, so I just have curtains and shut it. But I'd love to have no lights down there, but my neighbor, Tanner agreed, most of the people want to have safety instead, so. But that's, I don't know, in listening to what you've had to say, which has been very, I was starting to say illuminating, but I'll, so I'll just leave that pun in there, sorry.
Well played.
But I still don't know what I should be looking at just to prevent that kind of glare going and right in somebody's eyes, because the foot candles are low. They didn't even have high foot candles on the whole spot, because it's meant, it's for patients who are dying, let's be honest. They want to have a peaceful, kind of serene environment.
Absolutely. There are a number of ways that we can change, modify, specify the correct fixture. There are what we would call house side shields on a lot of these area lights, that we can prevent the light from spilling.
They put up.
They went back and put those on, right?
Yep.
And it's still.
A lot, a lot of them also offer backlight control. I don't, I don't remember the ad or coming for that house side shield, but I'd have to go back in my records.
You can drive by tonight before you go home.
Okay.
It's on the south side, it's on the south side. I don't know where you live, where do you live?
Uh, just outside of Binghamton, New York.
Oh, no, it's the opposite direction, sorry. I didn't realize you were.
Wrong word.
He's going to Foster's for dinner.
Never mind, never mind, never mind.
But the reason I said that was, there was a lighting package that was submitted, that was approved by the architect, engineer, and then you supplied it. So it was no reflection on you. And, and Ryan's going through the same thing right now for the town hall. You're doing this lighting package.
Yep.
And you got some comments from the engineer today, so.
Yeah, there you go again, blame it on.
It was not Peter, just silverware, one of his coworkers. But it's something we can easily work through. It's a little bit of communication and maybe, you know, a little bit of input from what you folks want out of this, right? So I know if you're pushing the gas station to go to 3,000 Kelvin, you, you may want to have 3,000 Kelvin going forward in your lots. Currently, he did ask us to go to 4,000 Kelvin.
We're pushing this because Kelvin is not referenced in our code or in Greenway. So, this board at least tries to enforce only what's on the books. But we are also establishing standards, because it's a preference. And I know, like, when we used to have, when I had to be working in an office with fluorescent lighting, that gave me a headache, because it's too blue, too white for me. And also, being of a certain age now, along with my friends, we all prefer dimmer, dimmer, warmer lighting these days, trust me. So, but again, I think what we probably need to do from here, from here moving forward, is discuss distribution patterns, because that's not something that we're seeing in the cut sheets. And if they can help us at least have someone from the lighting explain that. Because we don't, we don't usually have. Because we don't, we don't usually have lighting engineers here either, or any kind of lighting person. It's mostly architects who work with people like you.
Now, when they're submitting these plans, are they providing foot-by-foot calculations?
Yes. It's provided in our code, but again, we're not seeing, like, I, if I, the foot candle falls to zero supposedly at the property line, I don't, I didn't realize it when I walked over by somebody else's house who's still another 50 yards away, that that light still shines brightly into their eyes.
Right, very directional.
Yeah.
Very.
Yeah, so that's similar to to Michael, I'm sitting here thinking about the things that we look for in plans as county planning are on the planning boards. And we've touched on foot candles and some of the fixtures. One thing that is almost never on lighting plans that we end up digging through on my manuals for is a bug rating.
Yep, absolutely, and kudos to you for looking for that. For those of you who don't know, the bug rating is the only, only way we have right now to quantify the amount of glare that we discussed earlier.
So backlighting, backlighting and glare.
Glare, that's what the three stands for.
You know, if you get zero on all of them, I don't think that would solve that.
We never see bug ratings at all. But I matter, I only knew about it because I went down the rabbit hole of reading about all this. They had to hear, which, because I was like, "What's a bug rating?" Then I.
So what does bug rating stand for?
Back, backlighting, uplifting and glare. It's a zero to five, I'm sorry.
No, you're doing five, you're doing better than I am. She's hired. What about sales?
Zero is the, is the lowest and five is sort of the most egregious.
Five would be the most glaring, or the too, too, too much light trespass.
We always recommend, you know, zero across the board in fixtures. I do want to point out, there is, if you go online, you've got the Greenway code there. If you go on, compact, if you go online, there are some newer guides posted on the website and there is an LED lighting.
Oh.
One.
We didn't seem to receive it. Was it adopted?
Well, it's, 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 I think it's still being, becoming official, but it's there.
Okay.
If you want it as a reference point.
Love to see it, I will. I didn't realize, I didn't realize there were new updates, I didn't know there were updates.
I'd like to see it as well. I'm interested.
Well, no, the person originally who wrote most of these, John Clark, retired. How long ago, Heather?
Twenty fifteen.
Ten?
Eight years ago.
Was it, yeah, okay. Anybody else have questions?
Uh, I think also some research with respect to Kelvins and biological interruptors.
Yes.
Yep. So, you know, that's something else to consider with Kelvin.
Yes, um, more typically, even though it's shining in your, your room, more typically, we're concerned with that, with indoor lighting. And there are a lot of technologies coming out now that what we would call circadian rhythm lighting. We didn't touch on lighting controls at all, which I kind of wanted to touch on, but essentially with some fancy controls, uh, high-end lights, the lights can actually mimic the Kelvin temperature that is produced by the sun at that time of day. So it is a healthier lighting. There is a company called Bios, B-I-O-S, that is specializing in this as well. But yes, you are correct, there are concerns for sleep cycles, circadian rhythm, as well as the headaches and fatigue from being in the wrong Kelvin temperature. Yep.
That's for indoor lighting though, correct, not exterior?
Uh, I think it also impacts native species. Yeah, there are wildlife implications. I think there's even, I heard something about areas where they have, what is it, the sea turtles? Turtle-friendly lighting and I think in an actual, for sure, they all.
Yep, and so we don't have those requirements out here, but but I am familiar. The turtle-friendly lighting is even on the warmer side than the 3,000 Kelvin. I believe it's 2,200 Kelvin if you're in Florida near a turtle sanctuary. Another part of that is that light distribution, that glare rating, the amount of light that's produced at that horizon level, too much. So, you know, that that is a part of the turtle-friendly lighting as well in order to meet those criteria.
I'm afraid we're gonna have to wrap this up because it's three of six.
That's great.
But this was very edifying and I really do appreciate you coming down.
Thank you for coming down.
Coming off the down, Mr. Remza.
Thank you all. I'll leave a couple of business cards. Happy to field email questions, happy to help review anything, and yes, I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also appreciate county planning journeying down here for.
Thank you for inviting us. Nice to see you.
Well, we always think it's a fun thing to have these kinds of, we haven't had one in a while. I guess really since before COVID, we haven't, we're trying to still get back into our normal routine. And by the way, Mr. Veeth was the head of the Hyde Park Lighting Committee my first year on the planning boards, so 17 years ago.
Yeah.
And I still have a copy of the recommendations that you made for us.
Well, you see those candles back then.
Now, wait a minute, I think that there were pterodactyls flying back then. We do go really far back. At any rate, at the time, Mr. Veeth and his committee suggested specifically that sort of Victorian acorn style, but that for the more modern, like, post-World War II sections that we go with the shepherd's crook, I think it's called, lighting. And we've tried to carry that out all the way around town, so. They've, they've modified even the shepherd's crook, they've modified even now the open acorns so that there's even more, there's not so much light cast out this way, it's all down. Because like you, unfortunately, after being up here so many years, I drive around and I think, "Oh, my God, bad stormwater management, bad lighting." Because you start looking at the things you see over and over and you're looking for. But lighting has moved a long way, so good luck for drive tonight.
I thought it was just me that drove around looking at bad lighting.
No, you can't help it after a while, because you think, I know, I think, this is what I don't want to see in my town, that's what I'm doing. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
We have a minute.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
It's okay. Believe me, I know. It's okay, it's okay. I had to open the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and everything because we have to. So we're still, we're already in regular meetings.
Yeah, I got one, thank you.
Time for the next meeting.
It will be.
Submitted on it. And you can see the colors that come along.
Here we are.
Yep. So Larry, you're up. It's 6 o'clock. Yeah. Oh, that's right, you weren't here, we opened the meeting already because we had quorum. And we're being recorded, so people can watch us. So we're already ready to go.
Anybody else?
Leave him up here.
Yeah, perfect.
We'll hand him out to all of you.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you. For those who've been watching, we just had an educational presentation by Ryan Remza basically on lighting, LEDs, Kelvin values and bug ratings. The next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing for Bella Field, Phase 2A. Make a motion here for the public hearing.
So moved?
Second of all.
Favorably say aye.
Aye.
Yes, ask Victoria here.
Victoria from Michael.
Yes, I feel like that's almost more important than the, you know.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks.
Thank you all. Very nice.
All set?
Yep, ready to go.
Thank you.
I see Annie with you.
Yes, Annie. Annie's in the bullpen, just in case I need her.
It's good for her to hear about the lights and their impact.
Um, we need her often, so thank you, Annie, for for making it. Anyway, thank you very much for for having us tonight. This is for our Phase 2A, but before I get started, uh, by by way of update, our lights, our entry lights were were turned on last Saturday night.
Oh.
So last night I went by them and as I was going by them, I thought they were dimmed because they have no side throw. So they, you know, these LEDs, the way they're designed, the lights sit up into the, you know, the light and it shoots down, so I think you'll be very happy with it. They are 3,000 and they're beautiful. And the trees are going in too.
I, when I drove by down to a meeting today, I saw the trees being delivered, nice size.
Yes, they are, they are beautiful.
Big burlap balls down below.
Yep.
Nice to see.
It's coming together. We're very, very excited.
As long as we have you, real quickly, do you have a tentative opening date for the hotel? I keep getting asked.
I can go through that that schedule if you'd like.
Good. Some of us were able to see the interior, so.
Yes.
Rob and I.
Okay.
Just so everybody knows, there are already floors there that are fully furnished, equipped, et cetera, and could be ready to go. They're working their top from the top down, if I recall correctly.
Two, three, four, five, last one is one. So we're on one right now.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yep, yep, so.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, the, you know, it's, Chris and I, you know, we're coordinating all the the flows that are being sent down to the plant. Because the wastewater treatment plant, and I do actually have a picture, so let me just, this will be real quick, real quick. So this is the gen set. This was delivered yesterday. 450 KW, so if any electricity goes out, this baby takes over.
Whoa. Even like one light? One of those lamps.
That blew me away when that showed up. You know, I see it on on paper, but when you see it in real life.
How long is that or what are the dimensions?
It's bigger than the lab building, and the lab building is 40 feet.
Wow.
So I mean, it's.
That had to be delivered with a wide load?
Amazing, absolutely amazing. Yeah, so the lab building there, here we are, obviously, we're getting prepped for for putting in the the pavement.
Congratulations again.
And there's the hotel, that's the the east side of the.
And that's not a rendering.
No, that's.
Looks just like.
That's not a rendering, yeah.
It doesn't just look like a rendering.
So.
By the way, when you're inside the foyer, there's, you can see the Belfry, the cupola on top, but it gives you, that's a sort of a shaft of all light inside there. So you have, a lot of, I was impressed with how much natural light is in the main entryway in the foyer.
Yeah, it's, it's, the Shaner Group came in last week and they were thrilled. They have five-star hotels that they compare this to, so.
One more time, congratulations.
Yep, thank you very much.
Okay.
So as far as the dates, though.
Yes.
So Chris and I are coordinating on all the flow because the the MBRs, right? That name rings a bell, so that's the, the biological process inside, you know, that treats the sewer, that has to have a certain amount of sewer. And so when we're in training, that's not enough sewer, so we have to manage all that. But the bottom line is we're looking for a CO around December 1st and a training occupancy December 5th through the, through the 15th. And we would be open to the public the 15th, 16th, somewhere around there.
Christmas opening.
Can.
Holiday opening.
Just as far as the CO and the road and is that all set? The road's been patched and inspector?
The West Orsey Road, yeah. So I got an email from Pete this morning and and I went over it with everybody and we're trying to wrap it up. You know, agree to the terms, so.
Thank you.
Which is basically paving.
Up to the ludes?
Uh, up to the DOT paint because the DOT wants us to do work beyond what what the Highway Commissioner Superintendent believes we need to do. So we're gonna get done what we can get done, yeah. So open to the public, Marriott has blackout, you know, you know, times if, you know, if we don't hit by the 20th, then we gotta wait till after Christmas. So we're shooting to be before the 20th.
Okay, thank you. And tonight, we're here to discuss some changes that you guys made?
The, we received the comments Friday and Pete's comments yesterday and we're in agreement with them, so we'll update the, you know, update the plans and get them back in here, but they aren't significant, so.
Yeah. We were having some back and forth first about the the water tower. It's been concluded, I believe, that you're just gonna leave the water tower, it was sort of as a repair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, the way the whole thing started was we just wanted to get the, you know, the boards off the windows, we, you know, so.
To make it aesthetically improved.
East side of the hotels looking right at it, so that was the goal. But Tom jumps in and and he is, you know, wonderful and has ideas that blow my mind. But but we're gonna do that in a next phase.
Good, as you hear from me often, it's easier for a board to approve something that doesn't keep moving, it stays static once and for all. That's what happened with this one too.
Yeah.
For those who didn't see it, I don't know if everybody saw it, but it was going to have an external staircase, glass walls around, glass enclosure like you see around a pool and be sort of a viewing deck or be a place to view as opposed to just to look at.
Yeah, so we sent this over to Tad, it's the last page, so I'll just zip down there. So it's gotta catch up. Yeah, there it is right there. Where's the zoom button? Back on? Ah, there it is, I got it. So we took the stair tower off and the access to the top off. This is just a repair. At this point, we want to get the windows in, the door, the shed roof on, and that's it.
Great. Anything else you want to add?
The other thing, if this is the time to talk about, are the concrete monuments? Is that something?
This is the time to talk about it.
Okay. So it's just my experience doing them a certain way, the board has it, that's, that's, that's fine. If there's a compromise, if we could put them along the roadways and not interior.
That's what we were actually discussing last time, that, Tad?
Can we do an offline meeting?
If you'd like. Yeah.
That's fine.
Because it's really, it's, you know, when I looked it up, you saw I sent the sources that I found by Googling and they were, the monuments themselves are not that expensive.
No, 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 that's not the expense, right.
But we also, it's, Tad, in terms of, so you're, for your purposes, you're just thinking about where the boundaries are. For Tad's purposes, she doesn't want to have to go with, if there's some kind of violation or if there's some issue, she didn't want, doesn't want to have to take a metal detector out to find buried rebar. So and I was asked before if there were other occasions where we've had concrete monuments. And yes, we do subdivisions, there's concrete monuments. But that noted, usually in the backyards, people's backyards, there's rebar instead that's buried because you don't need the concrete everywhere. But it's also, we were thinking, as you're walking along, you know, if Tad needs to see something, you don't want to see exposed rebar in public areas, as you said, the areas that are facing the streets. So that's a large part of that goal. It's, I understand what you were looking for, but I also know that in Tad's doing enforcement, particularly if there's a dispute between lot owners or something.
Yeah, no, no, I, I get it. Like, the, these guys here, I would, you know, would be iron pens, but these along the road would be concrete monuments. So that's fine, we'll do an offline meeting.
We can do an offline meeting.
We also, just, we were talking about the idea of where the townhouses are, where the lots end putting something so the homeowners know, you know, not to, I know they're gonna be rented, but not to push out and not to.
A visual cue.
Well, if I can move this over here.
It's gonna be, they're rented, it's two lots.
No, 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 these are for sale.
That's what I thought, these are.
They're for sale, right. So.
And and all, all this is owned by the condo.
Homeowners Association.
Well, there's the master HOA, which owns the roads, and then there's an individual condo association, which will own all the land, you know, outside the buildings.
But marking so that the people know where their yard ends and where association property begins.
Yeah, there's, I mean, they, they don't maintain it, there's, I mean, are you concerned that they'll put a patio on or?
You know, I don't know, it's just because where those lines are in the future, people tend to just push out. You know, I don't know, it's just, because where those lines are in the future, people tend to just push out, out, out.
It's not a backyard to, to do, you know, that kinda thing.
There actually is no backyard.
Right, there's no backyard.
It's just the units and then the garages.
It's just you drive up in the garage.
Right.
All of the property is, is controlled and managed by the condo association.
Right.
But I'm a little confused, where's, so the land that's?
So those are separate lots, but then on top of the lots, it's a condo?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 each side of the road is a separate lot.
It's.
Yes.
One lot right here, so this building has its own lot right here.
And then the other is its own lot.
And then this guy here has its own lot right there. This is the Master HOA, and the same condo association will be for both.
Larry, will you be controlling or in the, in the agreement or whatever, like basketball, you know, basketball things? And they, they won't be permitted?
Yeah, they'll be in the condo docs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else you wanted to discuss tonight, Larry? We were talking about trail maintenance.
Okay, yeah, that's a note that we need to add.
And we normally have the plat filed prior to approving a site plan.
Yep. Oh, site plan or, or signing the site plan?
Signing.
Signing, I'm sorry, not.
That I agree with, yeah, that's fine. We, all the easements are written, I spoke to Labella and Lynn, and we should have something over, if not, the end of this week, early next week.
Lynn would be their easement attorney, I guess is the right term. Just so everybody else up here knows, I see the name a lot. Right. That's all I have, sort of, my notes.
And DOH, we submitted, got comments back. Chris, can you give us an update?
Yeah, we got some comments from Jason Teed and they were relatively minor, so we, we're just about prepared to resubmit them. We are gonna reissue the plans again. We're already working on the two letters from Pete and Bonnie and we'll try and, you know, make it convenient, do one submission with all the updates. But we are gonna be ready soon to go back to DOH.
Everything is ready soon on this now, I can tell, don't worry. Bonnie, do you have any additional comments?
No, it's a lot of housekeeping and I think you've addressed some of them already, so we'll just take a look at what you resubmit. Thank you.
Very good.
Peter, any comments?
Same here, I think mostly, you know, house, housekeeping items. I know Chris had sent through a response letter. Chris, as far as that, like retaining wall, on site plans, as I said, on C-131, I saw like a call out for a retaining wall adjacent, adjacent to the sidewalk on Carriageway. That's why I made that comment, so just double-check your plan, but that's where, that's where it was labeled. So, I mean, we don't have to look for it now.
Well, all right.
But you want to, I can say.
Well, while we were both, Chris and I were both looking at, where is this wall he's talking about?
I mean, we can look at it after the, I mean, after.
We have one wall, it's, it's this one here.
I think on the site plan, though, Pete, I think I've figured out what it is. It's, the call out is on the other side of the road and the multi-liter.
Oh, it goes across.
Goes across, and it's actually, it's broken in half, the multi-liter, because there's a wipeout behind one of the light pole tacks.
Ah.
I'm pretty sure that's what it was.
It's one of those CAD things, right?
Yeah, so we're gonna move it over.
Could I speak in layman's English for a moment? Why? Something, something on the CAD design is causing this?
Well, no, it was just, it was just the way that they were, where they labeled retaining wall. It's like the leader that points to the wall. He said it's a little confusing, so he's gonna go clarify. And then the only other thing, so, so the current Belfield trailer parking area, that's gonna be used for material storage for the townhomes and for contractor parking?
It's just gonna be for a trailer, because the material storage we wanna have down on Lot Seven, which is the lot adjacent to the hotel.
All right, well, why don't you, then you should go label that, then.
Yeah, we're, we're fixing that part.
Okay, all right. So is that, I don't remember, does that area need like grading and stuff?
Well, what has to happen is the, the hotel's cleaning it up, so, wait, where is it? Yeah, they're cleaning all, you know, all this up right now and.
Is that all, you know, flattened out now, or?
It'll be all flattened out.
Okay. Okay, so just go label it, that's fine, I mean, again, just, you know, you know, some cleanup items, we're good.
Ms. Moss, comments?
I have not had a chance to look at the changes in the landscape plan with the screening, I'll do that fairly soon.
Thank you.
Let me just add, I, you know, as far as like the generator goes and making the generator, one generator work for all the units, you know what, you guys will just have, you know, you're like electrical guys, they'll make it work, one way or the other. Don, I talked to, you know, Don about it, and he said that it can be done, and so, whatever, that's, whatever, whatever you guys figure out. And you said you're gonna provide landscaping around the generator. You should do something to kind of buffer it a little bit.
We're not gonna fight you on that one.
I, I think your tenants, the people who buy that would be a lot happier to have landscaping around it.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Just to kind of buffer.
It's, it's fine.
That's good, I'm good, thanks.
Ms. Polareau, any comments?
Just need final decisions on the monuments and some of the conditions, so we can wrap it up.
And you guys are close on the easements, I believe, right, or?
We provided a list in the subdivision approval resolution, but we don't have drafts.
I remember I saw, oh, you don't, okay.
That's what we said, early next week.
So.
That's what they're working on.
Once you get drafts, I mean, they'll need some time to get to the top of the pile, but.
Yeah, so again, they said they were all done, they just needed to be reviewed, so that's, that's for.
We'll keep it moving.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Veeth, any comments?
No comment.
Mr. Waters?
No, not at this time.
Zero.
Ms. Wasser?
No comments.
Vice Chair Dexter?
All I wanted to say was reading through all the, you know, these final memos and stuff, I'm, I love the level of detail and I love how it's so reciprocal, that it's like, yep, we know about that, we're gonna go change that, and oh, good point. They're kind of a pleasure to read at this point.
Because they're tying up loose ends. Vice Chair Oliver?
Just congratulations on the potential of the hotel opening before the end of the year, I think that's awesome.
Yeah, that's big.
Could be a really great thing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And while there is no restaurant, there is a bar that's open to the public on the ground floor.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Garcia?
No comment.
I don't really have any comments either, other than this has been a wonderful process. Moving forward, particularly when we first had building elevation proposed, it didn't seem to match the design guidelines. We appreciate all the back and forth.
I was looking at it again today and they are, that's.
They have that sort of modern farmhouse look, the more I looked at it, the more I've seen them now, so. And I'm sure that the residents who are there are gonna be very happy. As I pointed out, if you're on the end unit with, on that outdoor deck, you're gonna have lovely views of the river and the hills across the way, so. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak about this application? Pardon me?
You reopened already?
Yeah.
Yes, you bet.
Sorry.
I have two vice chairs who, even though they were roasting in conversation with us, said, Megan, a motion, they're like, motion, second. They can send, they can do that in their sleep, apparently, so. At any rate, we were planning on adjourned this to November fifteenth, does that sound about right, to get everything finished?
Yeah, well, there'll be a conditional final on fifteenth.
That's what we're looking for.
Terrific, yeah.
That's what we're looking, that's what we're aiming for.
Terrific.
So Megan, a motion to adjourn this to November fifteenth?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions, the motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we, we will have a Christmas celebration, I promise, even, even though you'll be gone, through the board.
No, no, no.
No, I mean, you'll be through the planning board, I believe, by then.
No, we're gonna come here.
Phase two A B.
Yes, phase two A B, right.
Two A sub B.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for the Horizon Wireless Tower, proposed at the, more or less at the intersection of Nine G and St. Andrews Road, but actually on St. Andrews Road. Megan, a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions, the motion carries. Welcome back, Mr. Olson, thank you for providing the information to, so we, I think at last time I had you, I sent you the summary of the comments made and provided by Adjacent Joining Neighbors, as well as Marta Knapp from the Town of Poughkeepsie, who also provided comments. And I noted you provided responses and explanations, and also answers about the specific other sites that were mentioned.
Correct, so I can summarize those for you if you would like.
Go ahead, please.
Sure, so you obviously have the letter, excuse me, that I provided. In terms of the first comment about health effects, you know, you do hear that a lot. The federal law basically says that, once you demonstrate that you will be in full compliance with the FCC emissions, you know, the local, state and local municipalities cannot deny an application based upon that. And with every application, we provide, we provided a licensed engineer certification that demonstrates that we will be in full compliance. We're like hundreds of times below the legal maximum of that which we can basically emit. Any tower that is higher, is higher than thirty feet will always, as a matter of science, be in full compliance, just because of the technology that's used. So anyway, but another issue that came up was, you know, property values. A few people spoke that they're gonna have property value decreases of fifteen to twenty percent. That's basically a common misconception, because if you go onto the internet, you're gonna see a bunch of statements like that. We've seen them. We've worked with a very reputable, credible appraiser, court certified, and we provided a market study with something we just, I just did over in Athens. And what he did was, it was not an appraisal per se of any specific property. He looked at five different, five different cell towers, before and after sales. They were in Athens, they were in Poughkeepsie, they were in Newburgh, Clifton Park, and there's one other I keep forgetting. I think it was in Green County.
But in the area.
But in the area. And what they do is they say, okay, before the cell tower came in, what were the property values? And then after the cell tower came in, where it was visible for the properties, what were the sales values? And they looked at, in that case, it was like forty-six different sets of data. And their conclusion was, there's no negative impact. There's no positive impact, there's no negative impact, it's just kind of a flat, no-impact situation. So we provided that for the board, just for the record. Hopefully, hopefully that helps. There were some questions about whether we could go on to some other locations. One of them, we explained, we're already on the Culinary Institute, we're also on the other one, what was it, Ross?
Ross.
Ross Circle.
Ross Circle, we called up the Hyde Downtown Site. We're on there, we're basically on every tower, tall structure in the area that we can be on. And we confirmed that the Duxess County Water folks, you know, we provided documentation from years ago. They said, kept saying, no, 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 this board contacted them independently and they said, no, they weren't interested.
It was about also, the question was not then co-location, but could it be set up on the land around it? It's actually a very small parcel, too.
Very small parcel.
It's tight.
And we brought that up with them, I think it was two thousand when we were talking. We first said co-location with them, and they said they don't want anybody on their tanks. And we understand why, we would actually prefer not to be on a water tank, but we will if we have to. It's just a kind of a nightmare when you have to take all your stuff off, so they paint it, whatever. They said, no, no way it's gonna happen. We said, okay, can we put a tower up in this location? They were gonna get us plans and we have all the emails that we submitted, and they just eventually said, no, we're just not interested. So, that was our first choice. We spent literally two years or so working with them, trying to get an arrangement.
I haven't, I know I'm.
I called you in the middle of it, saying, hey.
I made an introduction for you, yes, and I did my, did my best that I could.
No, you did.
But at any rate, thank you for the explanation.
Sure.
And I believe also one of them was the Belfield Site. And you also, your RF engineer indicated that it couldn't provide the right service because of where it's located by. And it's actually really close by St. Andrews, I mean, the CIA location, I should say.
That's what, that's what it is. It's, I know a lot of, I know there were a lot of comments, hey, there's a lot of land in Hyde Park, put it anywhere, and it just doesn't work that way. It really is a science, because it's based on physics and how RF propagation waves, how they propagate. And so, I know the RF analysis tried to go into that with topography, et cetera, but yeah, so we just, it's pretty specific where we have to be, given the network development at this point in time.
As always, I like to tell people that if you're up on the board, you, you think you're coming up here for one reason, but you wind up learning about a lot of different elements of land use, as well as science. And in this case, there, in the far northeast quad, not far, in the northeast quadrant of the county, there are candidates who've been running on trying to have the state provide maps where, so areas of need are known better. And I said, you know, actually, the applicant, the providers of these know where they are. And I said, it becomes a point where it's, is it going to be profitable for us, we don't have users over in this area? Because there are areas where, over there, where you have no cellphone service whatsoever. And I also tried to explain to them, even if you know the need, there's a lot of science that goes in this, because you're in a hilly area. If I could fly, if I could fly here like a bird from here to, say, Pine Plains, it would be twenty minutes. It takes forty-five to an hour because of all the curvy roads. Those same, those same curves and the same changes in elevation also affect the propagation of your airwaves. So trying to make perfect coordination everywhere is difficult. But in more densely populated areas like this, where, again, I've said this over and over again, the more users you have, the more drawdown you have, the, the more that the cell phone service deteriorates. As I said just recently, in the last six months, places I've been driving, I suddenly am dropping, going, what's happening here? Just two years ago, it was good service, but I know the answer to myself already. It's because there are too many people trying to draw down on it, so. At any rate, thank you for all that. I'm not sure we're going to placate the, you know, happiness or the unhappiness of the neighbors, whatever decision is finally made, but at least you've given us enough information, I think, to provide answers to them.
Okay.
We appreciate that. Consultants, any comments? I don't think so.
No.
Board, any comments?
No.
No.
No. I believe people are here to speak from the audience. Would you like to come up one at a time and just please state your name into the microphone for the record? Would anyone like to speak?
No, I mean, I think at this point, it's a done deal, so I don't think anything we say is gonna really make a difference at this point.
Again, nothing's a done deal, but we're not taking action tonight, but we are gonna close the public hearing, because I don't think there's anything else we can learn.
Yeah, come on, come on.
Yeah, yeah, just come up, just come up and, and speak.
So I'm Christina, I mean, obviously, you see my name on.
You're Ms. McGrath, I remember.
Yes, you remember me, so.
And make sure that the microphone's pointed.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
So I actually went on and I started doing a lot of research and looking up stuff. I don't agree with the comment that it does not bring down property value, because I have read articles, and one was brought up in New York City, where somebody had a cellphone, not even tower, but a cellphone pole that was placed across the street from their place, and they lost three hundred thousand dollars on the sale of their place. And that was a recent one. My other question is, I know healthcare, like health concerns are not something we bring up, because.
Well, you can bring it up.
All right, I'll bring it up, because this is what I read. Across everything, there is no proof that cellphones can cause any health issues, but there's no proof that they don't. There is not enough studies at this point, it has not been, 5G has not been around long enough for there to be a study to talk about healthcare concerns. My concern is, a lot of states throughout the US, plus in other countries, they are no longer allowing, they are passing bills, that they are not allowing cellphones to be placed in residential areas, near daycare centers, schools, any place with animals that are nearby, because, within a certain amount of feet, because of the risk of possibility later in life, they're coming out that they pose healthcare concerns and risks. So you're talking about placing a cellphone tower in a small residential area, very close to homes, and we have no idea what that future is going to kind of spray on us. What, I don't care what anybody says about how, like, 5G being safe, this being safe, that being safe. There's, there's all this talk about crossing of 4G and 5G and all this stuff, and believe me, I, it sounds like, like after a while, alien to me. But, you know, there is that concern. They don't have enough studies on this. And I'm just reading all across, all over, they are not allowing them to be put in residential areas. They are actually passing bills and stuff to keep them out of that residential area. That's a concern to me. That's a concern to me overall, altogether. We have people whose families border that, that, they're gonna be right there next to it, they have little kids. I have read articles about stuff that has happened to animals in homes. The person sells their home, moves, goes someplace else, and the animals are fine, they don't die, and this is next to a cellphone area. There's no proof that it causes it. It's speculation. Anybody that goes on and reads that type of stuff online, yeah, it's gonna diminish my, my property value. No matter what they say, it doesn't, it will, because people are not gonna wanna live that close to a cellphone tower. And this is just a huge concern, and I think this, we keep, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse. We say it over and over and over again, and the more I look into it and the more I read, the more concerned I get. The more concerned I get about my property value, my kids, my health. concerned I get about my property value, my kids, my health, my neighbors, just the community in general. I mean, we have the SPCA right there. They're going to be right there. I mean, how, like, how do you know it's how it's going to affect those animals in there? We don't. There is a potential that it could. We won't know that because it's not been around that long. So I, I don't know, I just, I just felt like I needed to come up and say something. To me, I just feel like at this point, it's going to proceed, and, you know, we've been here, and unfortunately, we were never notified. I found out when I got something put on my mailbox, and I'm on the adjourners list when I looked at the scan, and we were not notified. We got nothing by mail, and that to me is upsetting. I walked around my neighborhood, I walked, we walked door to door to talk to people, and you would be surprised at how many people did not know about it. And some people don't get home, it's at 6 o'clock, they're just getting home at 6:00, 6:30 from work. We told them to email. I don't know if they ever did. We said, "Email up, express your concerns." I don't know if they ever did or if they didn't. But we literally walked around to all of our neighbors to say, "Hey, do you realize this is going up?" I've had people say, "Well, it's not my problem because I just sold my house." So, you know, we're, it seems to see the same people coming in every week. So I, I don't know, I just felt like I had to get up and just express my concerns, you know.
Thank you. There have been different faces. So Mr. Olson could probably answer some of this, but so can I. If there are other states in the United States who are banning cellphone tower locations, that's the first I'm hearing about it, but.
I screenshotted some of them.
It's the Federal Communications Act that more or less, not Communications Act, what is this, what's the act?
Telecommunications.
Telecommunications Act, sorry. That the proper people to go to would actually be elected officials, and I don't even meet the local level, I'm talking really congressional, because that's who passed this law in the first place. And it's my understanding, because I've done some research on this way back when, too, that there are various health studies that went into, that were performed before this. You're saying they weren't, it's not been around long enough, they haven't done it on newer systems, which is possible. But all I know is, is that with the Telecommunications Act, it supersedes the rights of local.
I remember you saying that. I think Sagerties is probably one of the closest areas that actually has, but they can't put it. I believe it's Sagerties that has it.
The local officials can choose zones.
Elected officials.
Oh, elected officials can choose zones where they're permitted.
You know, zoning, you can zone for cell towers. The issue, of course, becomes that if you, if the cell tower is needed in a zone that doesn't allow it, then they have to go for a use variance, and there, there's actually a separate set of standards for use variances for utilities. It's not the traditional no economic value standard. So it is possible for the town board to reconsider the location of towers throughout the town. It's something you can talk to the town board about.
Okay.
That's not something I knew, that I even knew of. I wasn't aware that you could do that. Because you can't, but you can't create laws that completely restrict and zone something out.
Yeah, you couldn't say no cell towers in the town of Hyde Park.
But I mean, even, even in a, can you even, in a district, when you, because it's my understanding that if they show the need.
Well, that's what I was saying.
There is a special use variance standard.
Oh, and you show the need, and then the use variance clicks in.
Yeah, it's a, it's a different standard, but then it's, it's a higher standard.
So, but wait, in this particular circumstance, I'm not sure it made a difference because.
They would have had to go to the, if this were not a zone where it was permitted, they would have gone to the zoning board, made their case that there was a need, and then it, yes.
It's their decision then, not ours.
Well, then you'd have to approve the site plan.
No, but I mean, if they had said that, yes, they get a use variance, and then the same system clicks in. So I didn't know that, and maybe, maybe that's what you're talking about, is areas that they're trying to.
Right.
Say are more sensitive in the first place.
Yes, because it's a residential area, and so a lot of these places are saying, they don't, they've actually set a bill forward saying that they're not, they're to build a cell tower in a residential area, or any place near schools, daycare centers, and area sites for animals.
Do you, do you, I, I won't rely on your expertise or memory, but do you, by chance, remember how far away, what the distance would be, that they couldn't be close to a residential area?
I might have screenshotted it, I can look in my phone.
I'm just curious.
Because I screenshotted a bunch of the, the areas, the states and stuff.
Legislation, yep.
And just so, I'm like, oh, and I, that's why I believe it was Sagerties, or someplace that was close to us. And then there was another place in Westchester that both came up with the same thing, where they don't, they are not allowed to build within a certain amount, like you said, a certain, whatever, within the radius of residential areas, daycare centers, schools.
The Hyde Park law does not have that restriction, as we've gone through that process, it does not come up, but it's not something that you can't lobby for in the future to the town board.
Yeah, so the reason I'm going to say it this way, so we have to deal with the law, the code that we have now, but for the future, there's two different ways that planning codes change. One is if this board sees a need and we make, we kind of make a recommendation to the town board. It's up to them to decide, but because to change the zoning, there's usually a planning consultant hired, that would be, in many cases, Ms. Fransen, she did our last two changes. And then there's a long variety of circulation, just running communities, public hearings, but then once it's approved, it's sent to the state, and as soon as it's verified by the Department of State, then it's enforceable. But it is a process.
And I believe a lot of the reason why they are doing this is because of the simple fact there's not enough study to say whether there's healthcare effects. And they, they said that they're preventing the big corporations from being sued later. Oh, yeah, I, I, literally, I read that. They said, "This is preventing, protecting the larger corporations because there's no proof yes, and there's no proof no." But eventually, if something comes out and something was placed in a residential area or whatever, it's prevent, it's, it's actually protecting the residents as well as the corporation and whoever else is involved.
Well, believe it or not, sometimes we tell the same thing to people, that we're trying to protect you for the future in case of lawsuits, et cetera. They don't always agree with us, however. But I appreciate the amount of research you did and that you came and spoke to us. Anybody have any, anything else you want to add back to Ms. McGrath's comments?
I agree with you.
I mean, just for the record, we did just check the notice list, too, and you're at Dogwood.
Mm-hmm.
It does appear notice was sent, so you should have received notice, but.
Yeah, and like, like we said, I mean, we did not receive anything, so whether or not, because one of the things we said was, if, if you have, like, when we were putting an addition on our house, we have to have a variance, and people had to come, and it was sent by mail. It was a total shock to us when we got this thing on our mailbox, and I was like, "What is this?" And literally, that was when we started coming to the meetings.
Oh, she did get notice.
No, 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 this was.
I know, I know.
Three meetings ago. So, I mean, like, if, if, if we had received it, we would have been here sooner. So like, we, if, whether or not we didn't get it because of our mail, we don't know. But we did not receive, otherwise, we would have been here a lot sooner when this was starting back. When I went back and I looked at all of the previous stuff, and I saw it was dated September 1st of 2020, I'm like, we would have been back here then when this was going on.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Of our attorney, Victoria.
Yes.
Where this process really begins is when a cell company begins negotiating for town-owned land, a lease with the town board.
Okay.
So is that noticed? Is that process noticed to a butters?
That is not a noticed process.
So I'm just saying, that's really where the process begins and gets locked in.
Was that with, is with.
With the town board negotiating to lease town land.
When it's on municipal land.
Is it, is it, at this point, is it too late to go to the town board to say, "This is what we're seeing, this is like how people are putting these bills up regarding residential areas." Is that long gone off the table at this point?
So the town has signed the lease, and they actually signed a lease amendment recently to lower the height of the tower.
To maximize.
To maximize the current, what we're proposing.
Maximize, we're cutting it 150.
Right, okay, so to, to lower the maximum height of the tower.
Right.
So that's, that part appears to be done, but you can always lobby the town for changes, and you always have the right and ability to make these comments to the town board.
Okay.
But they would be breaking the lease if they stopped right now, which I'm guessing would enable Verizon to sue the town, because I don't even know if there's, there might be reasons inside it to break it, but we don't have a copy, I don't have a copy of the lease, I've not seen it. Have you?
Yes, I have a copy.
Okay.
But, but I, I mean, you, they can hire an attorney and review it and.
At any rate, but you can also, Dogwood, Lynn, Rigerio, councilwoman, Councilwoman Rigerio, I believe is your councilwoman. So I would start there with her, talking to her first, because you have to wait for an actual town board meeting.
Okay.
Because they, they only meet once a month, I believe, now, so that would speed up the process.
Okay.
But I can also assure you that most of the town board, as far as I know, watches our meetings.
Okay.
I mean, I talk to them periodically, individually, and they'll say, "Oh, I saw your blah, 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 blah." So they're, they're usually aware of this, so.
Okay.
In other words, you won't be starting from scratch, is what I want to say. Councilman Lombardi was here a few meetings ago, I know, went out to sign it, and so was the supervisor, I believe. They, you might not have been here, though, but they talked to some of the neighbors. I don't think any of you guys.
All right, we were out in the parking lot, talking to some of them when we were out there.
So that's, that's certainly a way to effect a change that could change the future, these applications, by adding in different requirements for where they're allowed. But right now, I believe they're allowed almost everywhere in our, in the zoning districts.
Michael, would it be possible to see if the board would like to make a recommendation to look into the, what is currently going on in these other towns?
Yeah.
Where, with that distance restriction, and see if we can make a change to our zoning law?
Yeah, we'd have to start by going, I mean, the planning board would need a, would write a recommendation letter on a topic for, to the town board, suggesting a change, and we could also have a meeting with them. We've had joint meetings before where we workshop ideas like this to move forward. Could certainly make a lot more residents happy if we had a little bit more, and by the way, when we would do this, this would be open public meetings where residents could come and speak as well.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Because up until right now, I didn't realize that was really an option for us.
I had no idea.
No.
That we could restrict it with zoning, because I, you know, being a dad and to young kids, I fully understand. There's not enough research.
Right.
And I wouldn't want it in my backyard and being told that the, you know, telecommunications law is restricting anyone from doing anything, you know, would be very frustrating.
Right.
And, you know, I, I think looking at the zoning would be a way to look at it.
And a lot of the, the stuff that I was seeing, as I was researching a lot of this, they were actually showing that some of the healthcare effects are, that kids are more sensitive to this, you know, because their bone structure is softer, their tissue is not as pliable, or is not as dense as us as adults are. So they tend to be the ones who are more affected by cellphone towers.
Well, just, just the fact that it is new, and there, there is no.
Right.
Definitive, you know, data either way is, you know, it's not something I want to take a chance with, with, you know, little kids' health, whether it's yours or mine or, you know.
And that's a, that's a big concern. And this is a lot of the stuff that we're reading, which then brings it back down to the assessment value of properties, because anybody can go on and see this stuff, and they start to see that research and see that it's not really, it's not, there's not any long case studies or case studies within a certain amount of time to show proof of, yes, it is, and yes, it's not. It's basically stuff that's been reported, stuff that has happened, and it's, but it's not put together. In other countries, yes, there are some research papers, but they're not too, like, I read them, I was just like, yeah, okay, you know, it's, it's, it's a research paper, but it, to me, I'm in the healthcare field, it's not a longstanding or after a certain amount of years. So I was just like, okay, but again, anybody too layman's can look at that and say, hm, I'm sorry, I'm not buying something there, a cellphone tower. And then, where then, we are going to either lose a lot of property, or we're not going to be able to sell our homes, so.
I appreciate you bringing up the other town.
Yeah, I'll look at what I screenshotted, and I can let you guys, I, let you guys know.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Would either, one of the other individuals here like to speak? Okay, I think we're, we've, we've had, we're hearing the same information now at this point, so I think it's okay for us to close the public hearing, so making a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? On my favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? Okay, so we will consider taking action on this, but I take it that you'd like, guys would like for me to write up a letter suggesting that we meet with the town board to discuss a rezone for this area?
Well, just in general, just to take a look, we have, we, we have some very tight neighborhoods in, I mean, when you look at the, the aerial, it's like, you know, they're in a, they're in a neighborhood, and there's, so there's, I think it should be explored to see if there's.
Yeah, I kind of feel like it's new information. I didn't know that we had that capability.
I didn't know we, yeah, as a town.
The only issue is that you have to talk with somebody like Verizon or somebody to map out what areas, like, you can put a zoning area in, but one if that's useless.
But they have all this data. They just said that they have all this data.
One of the issues is those, as you've seen, as I've said, as normal people use cellphones, they degrade, so you're going to always have more need, more, more need in similar areas that are close by.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's true, and you, you definitely can have your local town board create zones where these are not permitted. However, I'm going to be perfectly blunt with you, that those are easier to get zoned. Because of the public necessity test, we have to prove three things. We have to prove need, and, you know, it's not very intrusive, and when I look at those towns, I look at it and say, "Well, that's just going to be an easier test for us to do." I'm just being completely honest with you. Because there's a large body of law that's come out since the 1950s, where if, this is a public utility for zoning purposes, and you, I mean, part of the reason, more of my time is spent now next to neighborhoods, because the neighborhoods, the residential areas are the ones that are creating a huge demand, more of a demand than you would think. So kind of there, I'm not saying this specific neighborhood, but in general, the neighborhood, residential neighborhoods are the reasons we're getting closer and closer to them, because that's where, I mean, you know, you have an iPhone, you, you have your iPad, you have all this stuff, wireless stuff at your house, and it's not like it's.
We heard that during the last tower that went up, the neighborhood around there, that it wasn't right next to them, but they were going to reap the benefit, and they were very happy.
Yeah.
Because it was during the pandemic, and they were all home, and everybody was trying to do school and work and everything all at once, and they did not have enough bandwidth.
Yeah, and that's so, that's why we are getting closer to neighborhoods. It's, it's made the job, you know, not that anyone cares, my job has been a lot harder because we have to deal with, and I get it, that people have concerns. But I will say, though, to, to, to the extent that people think that there's, this hasn't been studied, that's just not true.
hasn't been studied, that's just not true. This specific technology was developed in 1971 or so by Bell Labs.